Everybody good? All right, good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I'm at seven oh four, so we will go ahead and call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order. Before we get started, a quick housekeeping note. There will be no regular meeting on January sixth. Rather, both the organizational meeting and a regular meeting will be held on January second. So just for calendar purposes and second reading purposes for any items that are discussed tonight, to which that may apply. Okay, we will get started then. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to items from the Parks and Recreation Board. Good evening, Director.
I have two items for you this evening. The first item is in reference to the pricing policy. The pricing policy is what guides the establishment of fees for the Parks and Recreation Department. This is reviewed annually by the Parks and Recreation Board. The changes that are requested are ultimately to better define the process for any type of makeup class, as well as fixing a formatting error within the document. So based on the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board, Administration respectfully requests a resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-five pricing policy. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion from my colleagues? Yes, Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. Director Farrell, if you could just very briefly just share about how this pricing policy integrates with the principles of recreation pricing structures and best practices?
Sure, and this document is directly related back to the Parks Master Plan as well. It ultimately defines how and when charges should be applied. The simplest example would be we're not charging to go to open park spaces. That is a complete community benefit, so it's available and accessible for all users. Therefore, we do not anticipate or produce any type of cost associated to that. We intend on subsidizing that full impact based off of the availability and the inclusivity of that particular item. In opposition of that, an item such as not picking on golf, but a round of golf is an individual benefit to that user. So when we're looking at that price and the recovery of that price, we would need to break even or, in that particular case, produce a revenue from that item. So the way that the document is broken down, there is a pyramid that has the, you know, the extremes that I just explained and everything in between that.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Jones?
Yes, so am I correct in understanding no major changes when I look at the red line beside, okay?
No major changes.
Okay, making sure I didn't miss.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, seeing nothing further on this item. It's a resolution, so consent agenda next week, okay? All right, thank you, Director. Next item, please.
I have a second item is in relation to the Comprehensive Landscape Board. This is a document that is reviewed by the Landscape Board every three years. We are expediting this process based off of the necessity of including the B-City USA. From the work done by the city forester as well as the horticulturist, we were able to reinstate that designation, and it does require for a board to be an advocate in relation to those seven designations, and the Landscape Board is the best suited in order to accomplish those tasks. As well, we have included a recommended tree list. While the right tree in the right location is still necessary, this list identifies options based off of the size of tree. So based on the recommendation of the Landscape Board, Administration is respectfully requesting a resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-five Comprehensive Landscape Plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion? Mrs. McGregor?
I just have a comment. I was looking at the approved trees, and some of the big trees get to be like seventy, ninety feet tall, and the requirement is like an eight-foot tree long, and I'm like...
And that's where we, again, referencing, and it is included in the document, that the right tree, right place. So just because that's on the large tree list doesn't mean that it would be allowable, given the circumstance of its size.
Okay.
Ms. Jones, and then Mr. Renner?
Yeah. So I noticed that some of the parts that were taken out were about owner responsibility to street trees, and just curious on why those came out? Do they exist somewhere else? Yeah.
The best way is to really direct the resident to code specifically. We are in the midst of changing code language, referencing the Street Tree Program. Since the city will be taking ownership over the trees within the right-of-way, that will directly impact that code. We do anticipate an opportunity for some education within this document, but the way that it's presented now would still be allowable for the city to take on that ownership without the need for another change.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowers?
Just a quick comment, and just to thank you and the staff for advancing this. I think that this manifests the values of the department by focusing on right tree and right place, by thinking holistically about integration with the Street Tree Program, and by advancing the B-City designation, too. I think that that really shows how we're looking at a holistically sustainable approach to what you're doing with conservation and parks management. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I did have one quick question, Director. The plan mentions the B-City USA Committee. Can you explain more about the commitments that the plan pledges the committee to uphold and what that would entail?
The actual, the document outlines, there's the particular designations that are included in that change. Those are specific to that. So it's expanding your pollinators, educating what those pollinators are, and just providing direct education to residents are just some of those examples of what's required. The Landscape Board is the committee in which we would communicate those opportunities for residents.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, consent agenda for next week?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Next up, we have items from Council Office. Clerk Van Meter distributed among us a list of various recognitions by month. Mr. Clerk, did you have anything you wanted to add, or?
Just wanted to bring this in front of Council for initial review and discussion. We, Council Office, researched the various resolutions that City Council has passed that were on Legistar, so that dates back to the early two thousands. The items on that initial list are bolded, indicating that Council has passed those or approved them before, and just wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh in on what you'd like to see for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. But that'll open things up for any comments, discussion among my colleagues here.
Yeah.
Ms. Bowers?
I think just to follow up on that, tonight is not like the only opportunity in which to weigh in on this, and I guess I'll reiterate, too, that this document that's been shared under this item is not a commitment to doing all of these. One of the things certainly that we've been trying to balance is time of meetings, volume of items on each meeting, and so making sure that whatever resolution or joint resolution proclamation we bring forward is able to be recognized appropriately and without trying to do too much at a given meeting. So this really is just to spark your ideas, spark some concepts of what is out there, and please feel free to follow up directly to Clerk Van Meter if there's anything on or off this list that you would like us to make sure that we're prioritizing in two thousand twenty-five. I know, for example, that there are a couple emails that I think we've received from folks over the course of this year that perhaps came too late for us to be able to do a resolution, and so getting those on the horizon for next year so that we can plan appropriately.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers, and I'll just add that resolutions are a nice way to honor, recognize, and/or celebrate, you know, members of our community and the diversity of our community and what makes us such a great place to call home, and certainly, you know, things come up in the middle of the year, too, so it's not an exhaustive list. So as opportunities arise, would encourage that as well. Any additional comments on this item? Yes, Ms. Jones?
I think just, I know we have more time for discussion, but one I would maybe call out just because February will feel like tomorrow is SRO Appreciation Day, and not necessarily one what we've done before, but might be worth thinking of sooner rather than later, since it's around the corner, essentially.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right.
I'm assuming that's SRO, a school resource officer, and that doesn't stand for any other SRO that I don't, okay. I was like, wait a minute.
All right, next up, we have items from the Senior Director of Administrative Services. Good evening, Director.
Good evening. I have two items this evening. The first is ordinance authorizing the city to sign the MetLife Employee Benefits Proposal. So earlier this summer, the city issued a request for quotes for a benefits consultant. In accordance with our procurement policy, the city selected NFP to conduct an initial review of our benefits packages for employees. It was then determined to submit a request for proposals for ancillary benefit lines to the market, so NFP conducted that RFP on the city's behalf and received various quotes from various insurance companies. After review with NFP, it was decided to go with MetLife to provide ancillary benefit lines that include basic life, basic AD&amp;D, supplemental term life, supplemental term AD&amp;D, supplemental dependent life, supplemental dependent AD&amp;D, and then employer-sponsored dental and vision plans. So the insurance proposal is estimated at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, which is an estimated savings of about fifty-five thousand dollars over two thousand twenty-four rates for the same benefits. In addition to that, the city sought proposals from NFP to provide a city-funded short-term disability program for all city employees. The estimated cost of this program is around sixty-five thousand dollars annually as well. We respectfully request emergency and waiver on this ordinance to ensure that there's no gap in employee-provided ancillary benefit coverages for one-one-twenty-five. All of the funding for these programs is in the two thousand twenty-five proposed budget as well. Happy to answer any questions on this action item.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion from my colleagues? Ms. Jones?
With MetLife, is it, do we have a contract term, or is it we get next year and we reevaluate again at the next, end of next year?
The different ancillary lines have different guaranteed terms. So dental is three years with built-in caps in year two and three for increases. Vision is two years. Group life is two years. Accident benefit is three years. Essentially, the non-paid, non-employer-provided ancillary lines for life and accident, those are guaranteed for three, and the employer-provided are for two.
Okay.
The life and AD&amp;D that's required by ordinance or collective bargaining agreements for two years.
Okay, so we have MetLife for at least two, in some cases, three years?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. Director, would you walk me through again the way that the short-term disability works with sick leave from a financial perspective for an employee?
Sure, if you have an accident or injury, you would file a claim with MetLife and follow their claim process. As an employee, you do not have to exhaust your sick leave banks or any bank to use a short-term disability program. So it's a thirteen-week program paying at sixty percent up to weekly benefit maximum of fifteen hundred dollars, and then an employee can supplement that leave with their leave banks. So MetLife will pay up to sixty percent, and then they could, to be made whole, if they choose to, they could use their sick leave, but they are not required to use other leaves.
So if an employee prefers to exclusively use sick leave, they could use the sick leave at the, is it a hundred percent payout?
If an employee is not required to use short-term disability, they don't have to.
Okay.
So if you don't want to use it, you can use your sick leave and burn through your sick leave. It is a benefit to employees to use a short-term disability program because they will not be burning through their leave.
Okay.
And the Ohio Revised Code requires that the employer make their pension equal to a hundred percent for those in OPERS, for those in OP&amp;F. There is no requirement under the Ohio Revised Code, so they will be, if they want to make their pension whole, they'll be required to submit their employee contribution to OP&amp;F. The city will make their contribution.
Can an employee use, can they blend sick leave with short-term disability?
Yes. So if you go on a short-term disability benefit, if I get injured and I need to be off work for six weeks, I'm going to file with MetLife, we'll assume they approve the claim, they are going to send a document to payroll asking payroll to verify my weekly wage. MetLife, under our terms, is going to send me, the employee, a weekly check with all taxes taken out. If I choose to say I'm getting sixty percent, but I want to get a hundred percent, I would supplement the sixty percent that they're paying with forty percent of my sick leave, whatever those hours end up to be, and then I would get the biweekly check from the city, so I would be made whole, and the city would have to pay all of my pension on that short-term disability amount, my contribution and the city's contribution.
Great, so in that scenario, an employee could keep a hundred percent of their, like their earnings, they could keep a hundred percent of their pay while using only forty percent of their hours, essentially?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion of this item? All right, seeing none, waiver is requested on this one, so on regular agenda for next week. All right, thank you. And emergency, yes. Next item, please, Director.
The next item, the Administration, on behalf of Mayor Jadwin, Director Becker, and Chief Spence, we are excited to, that the FOP voted unanimously in favor of the tentative agreement that we reached a couple weeks ago with them shortly before Thanksgiving. So in front of you this evening, you have a request to authorize the FOP contract for contract years two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-seven on emergency and waiver, so the contract can take effect on one-one-twenty-five, which is the beginning of the term of that collective bargaining agreement. Attached in the agenda, you have the report detailing out the various articles. I'll briefly go through some of those. This contract mostly focused on wages and payroll cleanup and some wellness initiatives. So the wage increase is four-point-five percent increase in each year of the contract. That is estimated to add a total of one-point-nine million dollars to police payroll for twenty-five, that's total for all three years. Under Article nineteen, hours of work and overtime, the deletion of seventh-day pay language, which caused officers upon working seventh day to get automatic double-time. There were very few instances of that per year, and it also was a cause of an arbitration, so it was some great teamwork there to get rid of that language. Under sick and injury leave, as Mr. Nolan talked about a couple weeks ago with the benefits ordinance, the FOP agreed to as well as to reduce their sick leave to a hundred and twenty hours per year, removing their accrual tiers, remove language to no longer pay sick leave out upon resignation, it's for retirement only, remove major medical and replace it with short-term disability, and then also agreed to the paid parental leave. And then Chief Spence is gonna give a briefing on the resiliency reboot program.
So one of our focuses this year in the contract was to implement a mental wellness component for the officers that was a requirement. What it is, is a biannual, thirty-to-forty-five-minute wellness business, wellness visits with a culturally competent masters-level behavioral health expert to discuss work or non-work stressors, learn or enhance healthy coping or resiliency skills, provide employees access to educational support and resources surrounding mental health. Why this is important, you know, from an officer level, it decreases the stigma toward mental health. We're losing more officers to suicide than we are actual line-of-duty deaths. In fact, the rate of suicide among police officers is fifty-four percent higher than the general population. You know, why and who's currently doing this? Most of our peer communities either have this program in place already, but, or are working toward one. It's a national effort, so for law enforcement across the country. Results, and this is from a national level, but also what we can see locally and within Lodge Nine, decreased time off, increased morale, decrease in citizen complaints, increase in positive citizen interactions, and then one study that was quoted, that eighty-six percent of officers who attended would recommend the wellness visits to other... who attended would recommend the wellness visits to other public safety officers. The records that are kept in this program, attendance, and broad themes with no identifying information. So, an example would be if our officers are expressing concern over financial matters, then we can redirect some of our educational sessions that we do internally to, you know, financial planning, just one example. What it's not is a fitness-for-duty exam. There are already policies that we have in place internally for fitness-for-duty exams should we have, say, a critical incident. So, it doesn't change existing policies, it only adds on to it. Overall, it was well-received, and we've included that in the contract moving forward, and I think it's going to pay dividends many years down the road.
And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chief. Any discussion of this item? Ms. Jones?
First, just a thank you for adding that in, the mental health piece. Just want to confirm, and I think this is a yes, but there are still other EAP and other mental health options in the benefits outside of these required ones?
That is correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
I should add, this is the first time in my 33 years that we've finished a contract with the FOP before its expiration. In fact, one year, we were out of contract for over two years. This is the first time, and to have it accepted by both bargaining units, or actually two bargaining units within the city, the supervisors and the officers.
Congratulations. Yeah. Well done.
Because I would ask on, in terms of the wage increase, that remind us, just, and maybe it's better for Finance Committee, but you're here now, how that has been factored into the current budget proposal that is we'll be considering here in a little bit?
Yeah. So, Director Berry will present that. She has included the, we did budget for a 4% increase, she has included the half a percent in the amended budget request.
Last call for discussion on this item. All right. Well, I will add my thanks to you as well. Waiver and emergency requested on this, so on the regular agenda for next week? All right. Thank you. Next up, we have items from the Department of Economic Development. Good evening, Director.
That's me tonight.
All right.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'm here to present just one item on behalf of the Economic Development Department, but this is the annual city/CIC agreement that we see annually. This was largely talked about last week during our budget conversations, but this is the agreement that ties directly back to that allocation that we asked for. So, this is the annual agreement with the purpose of promoting and encouraging economic activity throughout the city. These monies are largely used for, again, the maintenance and management of property owned by the CIC. I think we went over some of those things last evening, I'm sorry, last week. I do know that this agreement was edited, and not edited, but adjusted last year to include a more refined list of items that the monies could be used for, and largely this agreement stays intact 100% with the exception of changing terms and those types of things. Was approved to form by Madam City Attorney. So, the Department of Economic Development is respectfully requesting City Council issue an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into the 2025 CIC agreement, the CIC agreement, and also requesting an emergency so that it take place sooner than later.
But not requesting waiver on this one?
Correct. So, if we have the regular council, my understanding is we're going to have the regular council meeting on January 2nd following organizational meeting. That would then function as the second reading for this. As long as we have the emergency that goes into effect in January, we'll be fine. I do actually have one correction, and I apologize for Director Schultz, that was the conversation that Madam City Attorney and I were having shortly before this meeting began. She did review the contract, and there was a change that I had missed, and then we had some dialogue around that, and we probably do need to make, look to our council clerk here to help because I do need to make yet another amendment to, or revision to, this agreement. Specifically, if Council can, I believe you do have the agreement available. So, it would be Page 3 of the agreement, what is currently under Section 3, City of Gehanna Obligations, Paragraph 3, that says the CIC will present costs to the City Finance Director for review determination of eligibility and payment. No payment should be made or due beyond those amounts appropriated by Council pursuant to this agreement. The language of that is fine, however, the City Attorney's recommendation as to form is to move that up under, so it would fall under Paragraph 6 in the preceding section, which deals with CIC obligations. She felt that was more commensurate with what CIC obligations are versus city obligations. So, that paragraph would become Subparagraph 7 in Section 2, and then what is now Paragraph 7 would become Section 8. So, we can make that change and send that to Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion on this item?
I guess I'll just open it up. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Madam City Attorney, are there any other concerns or questions that you have regarding this document?
No, I think with that change, it would clarify the obligations for the CIC in that section. Since they operate as a reimbursement situation here, then I think that clarification under Paragraph 6 would alleviate my concern of conflicting language.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Clerk, I guess my question would be if we had the updated amended agreement for first reading next week?
Yeah, that will work, yeah. As long as we have it before the agenda goes out.
Okay. I can send that to you in the morning. Thank you.
Any need for this to come back to, well, we're not having committee in between, so, never mind. I'm not planning on calling a committee in between, so. All right. Seeing none, then we'll put this on.
It will be on regular.
Yeah, and on for regular agenda then on the second. So, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam Mayor, City Attorney. Any other items for Committee of the Whole? Seeing none, we'll adjourn Committee of the Whole, and I'll turn things over to Chairman Schnitzer for Finance.
Thank you, sir. Just give me a thumbs up when you're good now? Okay. All right. Let's commence Finance Committee for December 9th, 2024. Just a quick recap, we received the 2025 proposed budget from the administration in mid-October. By my count, I think we've had eight Finance Committee meetings covering the budget, including department-by-department breakdowns. We've held two public hearings where the general public can comment on the budget. All to get us to this point where, after all that sausage-making, we have essentially a reconciliation from what is anticipated to be voted upon a week from today compared to what was originally introduced in October. I think all Council members have the ordinance, or copy of the ordinance, as well as a fund-by-fund breakdown in front of them. I believe this is also attached to the agenda with that. Does the administration have any general comments or presentation or anything like that?
No presentation, just looking at the majority of the changes. We're in the general fund. A lot of them were reclassifications, not really many additions or removals, so just happy to answer any questions you might have on that reconciliation or any of the other attachments that I provided.
Anything from Council, just based on the brief intro?
I've got a question, a couple questions.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Bowers. And I know we have the lingering question about the, I guess, the 4% to 4.5% as well. So, if that's your question, no? Okay. Then you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Just overall, we had talked at the beginning of the budget cycle about the staff adds that had been included in this year's proposed budget, indicated a 7% overall salary and benefit increase. I see on this budget, though, that, now I understand that there's the 4.5% increase coming forward with the FOP contract, so I understand that there's going to be a natural increase there, but I also identified a couple other salary and benefit increases coming out, at least out of various funds, predominantly the general fund. So, what percent does that put us at for the 2025 budget in terms of salary and benefit increase, if you followed my very long question?
I would. I'd have to go back and recalculate it because you also have a very large reduction for the corrections to the module, so I did not go back and look at what those are. So, I could definitely provide what the salary and benefit increase was compared to 2024.
Yeah. That would be helpful, and by email would be fine.
Okay.
As opposed to waiting until next week.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then I guess the only other thing I have, Mr. Chair, the Service and Parks Garage Study, I don't recall that coming forward, so maybe if you just want to share with us a little bit about that?
Sure. That was on the facilities capital plan section. There was, I believe, there was three projects and two, one of them was going to escape me, but I introduced $100,000 for the parks and parks and maintenance garage for any study work that we may need to do in the coming years. I'd introduced the fact that this year alone, we've investigated three different properties and had spends on some of those properties to do investigations, and that was what this $100,000 coming from the general fund was as opposed to capital because it's planning work. The other $50,000 was for any work that may need or any spends that may be required for 200 South Hamilton here. Yeah, 200 South Hamilton here. So, those were the two projects that I had presented along with, during the evening in which the facilities were presented.
And that was moved from capital because studies are not capital, because you don't know if they're ultimately going to end in a capital asset or not.
Okay.
So, that was a reclassification to operations in the general fund.
Okay. That's helpful. Was it originally included on Page 115, which is the overall chart?
It was not. It was in the budget book itself.
Yeah.
No, it was not. It was an add at this desk the evening in which I presented facilities.
Okay.
Which was the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's been a lot of information over the last eight weeks.
Correct.
So, thank you for clarifying that and identifying that it's not an addition, it's just a change from Capital Improvement Fund to GF.
That is, no, there was an addition of $150,000 for those two items. That's what I did at this desk that evening. I presented them as general, not as, I presented them during the capital portion of the budget presentation because it related to facilities, and technically, those things would be not necessarily charged against capital, but understood against capital.
Okay.
But I introduced them that evening as being charged against the general fund, and then there was just some communication between Joanne and I, which, there was some confusion there on everybody's part.
All right. Well, thank you for the clarification tonight.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Council, anything further regarding the amended budget? Director Berry, do you have any comments in general on the impact of the change from 4% to 4.5%? I think obviously we entered budget season with an estimate of 4% and ultimately walked away from a relatively painless FOP negotiation with 4.5%.
Yes. So, if you look at, there's actually a line, FOP negotiation update for wage increase, 4% to 4.5%. For the general fund, that was $34,481 was the addition there. And then you also have the Public Safety Fund, which is our SRO officers and the community liaison officer, and the extra half a percent there is roughly $3,000.
Colleagues, anything? All right. So, this will go on regular agenda for next Monday. Anything further from my colleagues for Finance? Seeing none? All right. We're adjourned. Thank you so much.